Welcome everyone. We'll start off as we normally do with a prayer request list. First, we have Ms. Patty Agee's mother-in-law that's passed away. We need to remember that family. Ms. Wendy Kahn's mother passed away. We need to remember that family. Ms. Rachel Kelly's husband, John, has not been feeling well. Need to remember him. And Ms. Sarah Tenpenny has been in the hospital. We need to remember her. Are there any others that we need to add to this list? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. To have me, Father, we come to you thanking you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us, for the seasons that we see change here in this part of the country. We're so thankful for that, being able to see your beauty and your creation. We just want to thank you for every blessing we've been given. And we know there are those that we just mentioned and others that we know of who need our prayers and may not be as blessed. And we just want to pray that you will be with them and their sick, help them back to their much-wanted health. And if they've lost loved ones, comfort them in a way that only you can. We are so thankful tonight and want to be so prayerful for the young men and women who are here in the top 10. We're thankful for their accomplishments. Pray, Father, that you'll be with them and be with their classmates as they're about to graduate. We want to pray that they believe this school system, prepared for whatever is in front of them in their futures. And we want to pray that they'll remember, as tough things come along, tough decisions in their lives, that every decision they make has a consequence, whether it's good or bad. And we just pray that they'll always look to you in their decision-making and choose the right paths in their life. And just pray that you'll bless them throughout the rest of their lives. We just want to pray tonight, Father, that you'll be with us through the rest of this meeting and also be with us the rest of our lives. It's these things we pray in Christ's name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start off tonight with our awards and recognitions. Ms. Gina.
Hello. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing our top 10 seniors at Gornsville High School and Smith County High School. And we're going to start with Gornsville High School, just by F-13. Okay? So if our top 10 statements from Gornsville High School, y'all come on up here and stand with me. We'll put you to the test right off and give an order that you are right. I know we do not have everybody tonight because some of them have prior obligations. I know softball's going on. Y'all probably know there are other things going on. Baseball, softball. Well, I gave them a little cheek-cheek when they walked in. So I'm just going to turn it over to them and let them talk to you just a minute about themselves. All right, we'll start with... Who's 10? We'll start here and work our way up.
I'm Gregory Wayne. I'm number 10. My parents are pre-k and after-late students. Planning to go to Cumberland to study business after high school. Favorite teacher, Miss Amanda Mason. She teaches business classes. Favorite, that would be winning fifth place in organizational leadership at the state university.
My name is Taylor Board. My parents are American boys. My favorite picture is Abby Baker. Her picture is Autumn Dennis. Favorite high school memory is, I guess, I'm older than Davy's oil auto shop. And we kind of had a little miss out in school home a little more.
I'm Cameron Gaskell. My parents are star of that high school. I plan on attending UCU with a degree in aerospace and my name is in pre-education science. My favorite teacher is probably Coach Stoneham. He teaches at FCP. And my school memory is probably Senior Garth Brooks at FCP.
My name is Jack Wright. My parents are Brian and Regina Wright from Brush Creek. I plan to attend Tennessee Tech in the fall. I'm either going to major in agribusiness or civil engineering. My favorite high school teacher would probably be Miss Hayley Randolph. We had a lot of fun learning in her class. She also was very good at building relationships considering her time at UCU. Favorite memory in high school, there were so many. But we're also, we're blessed to have FCA in school. And if you didn't know what FCA is, it's Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And it was a blessing to see some kids that were able to be exposed to Jesus. That was a true blessing. And I appreciate y'all for allowing us to do that. That would be my favorite memory.
Hi, I'm Sidney Bass. My parents are Billy and Amanda Bass. I plan to attend Tennessee Tech in the fall and send it for major in nursing. And my favorite teacher is Coach D. And he teaches math and he's really fun. And my favorite memory is going to all of the basketball games and spending time with all of my friends.
Hi, I'm Melody Roth. I'm the volunteer for Gornsville. And my parents are Kirk and I and all and really much great. My plans for after high school is to attend Tennessee Tech University and pursue a career in pediatric nursing. My favorite teacher would have to be Mr. Anthony Geis because he taught all the most torturous classes like Bio two and then issue physics. And he made them a little less torturous. And my favorite high school memory would have to be participating in the student section at this past season's Carthage sports.
Thank you all. And the principal of these is Mr. Shane Vaden. Shane, do you want to come in and say anything?
Can we get the parents to stand?
Yeah, they're all great kids. The ones that don't hear are at ballgames or at work.
Okay, work.
They have prior obligations, but we're proud of all those.
Would the parents of these students please stand?
Just give them around, y'all.
At this time, we have a medal to give to H20. And as we give it in... Eddie, did you get a picture yet?
Over here.
Have you got a picture yet? Okay. All right, so Melody? Thank you. Sidney? Jack?
Yes, sir.
Cameron? Marco? And Zach? Smith County High School, y'all come up and hold it straight.
My name is Ethan Buckler. I was 10. My parents are Adam Christie-Buckler from South Carthage. My plans after high school, I'm going to go to Cumberland University to major in business accounting. My favorite teacher would have to be Miss Denise Packett. And my favorite high school memory would be being in the science class in the biology department.
My name is Avery Schoolfield. My parents are Martin Christie-Schoolfield. I plan to go to tech to nursing. My favorite teacher is Miss Packett. And one of my favorite memories is going to state convention for everything.
Kendall Williams. My parents are Bobby and Nicole Williams. After high school, I'm going to go to NTSU to major in biology and hopefully go to medical school to be a dermatologist. My favorite teacher would either have to be Sarah Tenpenny or Charles Gross. And my favorite memory is all of our physics experiments.
My name is Samantha Lewis. My parents are Scotty and Pamela from Elmwood. After high school, I plan to attend Cumberland University and pursue a psychology degree. My two favorite teachers are Mr. Wesley Foster, my FFA advisor, and Mr. Nicholas Bissell, my soccer coach. My favorite high school memory would probably have to be getting the chance to attend volunteer girl state this past summer with a bunch of amazing girls from our university.
Hi, my name is Hannah Gregory. I'm the daughter of Don Gregory and Tony Whitfield. I plan to attend Mississippi State University to pursue a degree in pre-physical therapy. My favorite teacher was Mr. Wesley Foster, or Mr. Foster, also my FFA advisor. And my favorite high school memory was winning 2018 Tennessee State FFA agricenter.
I'm Tristan Nixon. My parents are Matthew and Sean Nixon. When I graduate, I plan to attend NTSU to get a degree in forensic science with a focus in promising investigation. My favorite teacher would have to be a tie between Mr. Charles Gross and Wesley Foster. And like Kendall, my favorite high school memories would have to be all of our fun physics experiments.
All right, parents of these students, will y'all please stand up? Eddie, you have a picture? Eddie, you have a picture? Okay. All right, so Tristan? Mr. Smith, you have your medal? Melody? Samantha? Kendall? Avery? And Ethan? Y'all did a great job. Thank you. You're just past your test. But congratulations on this well-deserved academic achievement. We're happy to share an excitement of your upcoming graduation. I know this is an exciting time for you, and we're very proud of each of you. Smith County Schools, wish you much success as you move forward. Thank y'all for it.
On behalf of the board, we want to say congratulations. And just remember where you come from. That's the best advice I can give you.
Mr. Cam, do you want to say anything?
An outstanding group. Very, very, very proud of them. Again, the ones that we're missing. Outstanding group.
And graduations are May 17th and 18th?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth and 18th, and they'll both be inside. I had that question, so they're both planning on being inside.
All right. Again, congratulations. And we're going to continue on with meeting. You're welcome to leave. I know everybody loves the rest of the excitement, but you're welcome to leave if you would like to do so.
I don't want that for a second. Keep saying bad things, but... Keep saying bad things. It's probably all true. I guarantee you, somehow we have them just really lonesome.
We won't let you get started on him, then.
No, we're not going for him, sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Cameron.
We don't have that much.
I feel my hair is very greasy.
Yeah, I got to get one in, if I get it in. Okay. We'll move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have our superintendent actions. This is, of course, shows placement, substitutes, terminations, resignations, volunteers, all that info. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at that. Now, we will move to...
Let me, I don't know, is that... I might have to write down to that. I had to find out if I was up for this. Let me see where it's at. I've got my stuff. Where is it?
Page before new business.
Okay. I'm glad I got somebody that likes me over here. There it is. I've owned this, we've got, I've got an issue with our basketball coach.
Wait a minute.
Is that, is that in here?
It depends on the question. If it's... I'm trying to think, does this need to be an executive?
Well, you can't, but let me address it and then maybe... Maybe Mr. Winchler can help. Maybe it might be better to just let Mr. Winchler address.
If it's a particular issue about a particular personnel...
Somebody being, yeah.
If it's that person is entitled to notice and be apprised of the subject matter of what you're going to discuss and bring up. So, I would say, if you've got that issue, let the chairman know when we need to put that individual on notice we can. To be here is their option. If you do not, they do not. If it's a question about a particular issue with personnel, I'd say first talk to the director. And if it's something you still want to address, then we have to put them on notice if it's going to come out in court.
Well, just forgive me for asking this, but what's the use of having this in here, Brian, if we're just going to flip the page and turn and go on? I mean...
Well, no, this, this is...
I don't understand that.
This superintendent actions, it gives you the opportunity to look at this. This is things that the superintendent will do that we really, this is placement. This is something we really don't do, as we've discussed. This gives you a chance to meet with him before this meeting, to go over, if you've got questions, or call him, or this is one of those things, if you have something that you don't understand, or you don't like, or you don't, you can talk to him about anything. You know, we can't talk amongst ourselves about certain, but this is something you can take to him and he will talk to you about it.
Like we had in our meeting, though, last week, can we set policy for some of this right here? We can set policy for some of this, can't we? Because I'd like to take some of the burden off of our director sometimes. And I feel like there's a, I feel like we're sitting here with nothing to add to or take away from, this is a lot, this is a lot right here for him to have to...
But this is a lot.
But the law, statute says that's what his role is, that that's what he's required by statute to do, is to make these placements. And I'll tell you, you can adopt any policy you want, that just came by Tennessee law.
So what, when would be appropriate time? You have to, sometimes I'm like this, but when's the appropriate time to set policy for, for us?
We would bring that up probably like a discussion.
Just like we have at the end of...
Yeah, like a discussion, you would tell me and we would put this on the next, if you've got something in, we can't talk about particular people, but if it's something you have a question about a policy or how to add or something, we need to talk, we'd add it as a discussion next meeting.
Can you remind me to do that at this meeting or when we do it?
We can do it at the end of this meeting. We can add whatever to the next, we'll tell Ms. Moore, and she'll add it to the agenda. And we can do it that way, if you want to do that. So we'll get to the end, and if you've got a discussion question you want to add, we'll add it on the next meeting's agenda.
All right.
Any other questions? Good?
Well, I got one question about the volunteers, school volunteers. So when, when are we actively involved in, let's just say we have a bad candidate and you don't know about him, but he's my neighbor, David, and I know he's a bad candidate, but he's on here, and you'd want to know that, wouldn't you?
Oh, absolutely.
There's policy in place.
When would we address that, Paul? When would we address that?
You would, you would, from my understanding, direct it to me, and then at that time, you know, they go through fingerprints, background checks, just like a teacher or anybody else, okay? But if there was something that, I guess, legal at that point, I'd confer here, and then we would just take it off if that was something that we knew.
So these, if we say tonight, I was just, I'm trying to ask for, say we pass this, or is this an action we're going to vote on?
You're not voting. You're not voting.
We're not talking about anything there.
No, this, this is just...
This is what he's done this month.
That's what he's done.
The truth, I don't know by stature, does this even have to be in our book? You could probably rip this off.
Well, it is about policy.
Policy, yes, well, that's just the actions that he's done that he's entitled to do for the month.
That's all I'm trying to do, and the point I'm trying to make, I'm trying to help the director here, because when you guys are going down the road and you see one of my trucks and he's waving, I want to know about Brian, and I'm trying to help the director, regardless of opinion here on some of this right here. But only place that we have, and just help me here, if we feel like at one of these teachers, or any teacher at any given time, and I know we had our work sessions, so forgive me, and I'll quit after this, but if we don't feel a teacher is good enough to be rehired, when do we need to talk about that with the director, or with this board, or with you, Jamie? If we say a teacher is tenured, but let's just say we know that something's going on...
That's right.
You would direct it to him immediately.
So it could happen at the beginning of the school year, you can, we can...
During the school, if something went wrong, let him know.
Twenty years' experience, if there's something going on, it's inappropriate.
Whether they're tenured or not tenured, if they're certified, there are certain procedures you have to go through, and formal charges that would have to be brought. But that would start with an investigation. That investigation would have to be triggered by you telling him.
Yeah.
And then he'd investigate, and then it would go from there.
So, but, one more question then, I promise. So if I brought it to you, not taking that you would do this, but if I brought it to you and you blow me off, and I'm not saying that, but he don't have to answer to nobody, even me, if I bring attention to him about someone that I don't feel like we need teaching or a position field. How do we, how do we resolve that, Jamie, if...
I would, I think he does answer you. I think he absolutely does.
He answers you.
He is a body. He is a collective body now potentially, but...
Okay.
If you think that was inappropriate, then there are certain...
Because I know if he's like me, he wants to know if you've got a bad apple in the bun.
And I get, not just from the board, but, you know, sometimes it's real, sometimes it's not. But I, I don't have a Facebook account where people can't say that I'm only on purpose, you know, excuse me being on the day. But I've probably got 15 people, first time at a teacher, folks, happy birthday, at 11:03, that they start ringing, and they cut me no, and we investigate. Sometimes it's warranted and they get suspensions. Sometimes they say, "Mr. Smith, my phone." You know what I mean? Just an example. But I don't try to do anything, just me. Jamie knows I talk to you how many times a day. I wish I didn't, because I'd like to cut that bill down. But he's trying to keep it up, and I'm trying to keep it down. But he, at that point, I'd ask him, and if it's something, a lot of times we get the sheriff's department involved, and see if there's something pending in the core systems and so on. So it don't just end. I mean, I wouldn't want you to ever think, I would just let it, but it ain't, no matter how low level or high level, we do an investigation sometime.
Okay.
And to answer your question, Marty, on the school volunteers, there's a specific process that they have to go through to be involved, to be an actual volunteer. And we changed that policy to make it a little stricter a few years ago. Maybe two or three years ago, we'd have to look it up. But you might want to look at that policy, and I think that would make you feel better about some of the concerns that you have.
It used to bother me because I got in the first, one of the first field trips I took with my son. You know, they were people we divided up that I didn't even know who they were, and letting them go through these, we were at the zoo on every get, and I'm like, golly, you don't know anything about. But now, with the board, new policy, if you're a volunteer, a real volunteer, you've got to go through the same thing a coach does, or a teacher. You've got to get fingerprinted, background checked, TBI.
So you're just not letting any candidate walk up and go on a school trip?
There's some in this particular group right here, the reason we did with both high schools, was they had asked about just taking their child, and I said, no, let's go with stepbrother in case. Robin and I meant to go, and then all of a sudden, she had a care case, and I had to take hers, and I ended up supervising. I said, let's go, we can get them done this way, and that way, we know everything's good.
Because there's going to be an item we're going to go over, and I don't know where it is in here, but it's a field trip, and I seen where there wants to be family escorts. And I'm sure that's legitimate, but are they going through the same process as this?
That's what we're trying to do, is get these people through the same thing. That's what I talked to Jamie about this week. We won't, I don't call names up, some of them, some of them this time are family escorts, but we're going to hit.
Because I, we don't need somebody that don't have a driver's license, and it don't matter to us, but it does reflect back on us. It does reflect back on us, don't it?
Yeah.
And that picture, instance, Mr. Smith asked me, and we decided, whether they call the family escorts or not, for this board's purposes, they're going to be school volunteers, and they're going to go through the same process that anybody gets...
You're pretty sure that happens, then?
Well, I talked to both principals about that week, or this week, about that same situation, because they'd asked about the parents. We had some, we had some sponsors that this thing's in California, I think, is that correct? And some of the sponsors done had vacation schedules, and it wasn't fair to knock those kids out of going. But I didn't want to send them, because like I said, I was afraid what would happen, is three of us decided and then two of them couldn't go last minute, then they'd want to go. I said, let's just go ahead and get them. I called Jamie, let's just do it exactly like the coach, that way we're covered. We know that, that background check, we're good to go.
So some of these, Brian, that's on this school volunteer, will they just be voted on once, once they're in our system?
No, not voting on them.
We won't vote on them.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
But if you have an issue, if you know something, go to him.
We'd start an investigation. Like I said, we'd go through, depending on what the allegation was.
Basically, basically, our vote was on the policy that hired, that was used to hire these people. And so that's where our end good is, is on the policy. And if you have an individual issue...
I'll give it to you, Gina, I guess you can help me figure out the new, the, I'm sure it's, you know what number it is?
The policy number.
The policy number for the...
For school volunteers?
Yeah. We'll get with you tomorrow.
Okay.
Yep.
Any more questions? If not, we'll move on. New business A, this is policy amendment 4.600, grading system. This is the second and final reading. We have a motion on new business A.
So moved.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is a policy amendment 4.605, graduation requirements. This is the second and final reading for this policy as well. We have a motion on new business B.
Make a motion, new business B.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C. This is policy amendment 4.209, alternative credit options. This is also a second, final reading. We have a motion on new business C. Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business D. This is policy amendment 4.603, promotion and retention. This is also a second, final reading. We have a motion on new business D.
So moved.
Mr. Apple, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McHale, any discussion?
On this thing right here, is the, is the parents, how are they involved in this as far as this decision-making? Is, if, let's say a kid is borderline, Barry, is the...
Well, and...
If that parent says, absolutely, I don't want my kid held back.
Of course, at the, at the high school level, it's based on, there's not a lot of giving, okay, obviously, but, and then at the elementary level, the parent, it could be, you know, what, a child could, could to the extent of have good grades, but the maturity level, you know, you could feel like a child wouldn't mature enough for big enough. The parents are very involved, is what I'm trying to say. And sometimes they're not on board with the same decision. The state tells us, especially, like, with special education students and regular, both, they want them to be within two, there's not a law, but they advise us to have them within two years of age appropriate, because if you don't, if you've got a 6'1" kid with 5'4", 5'2" kids, they don't fit in, and there's a high rate of dropouts related to that. So that's where their expertise has got to come in. But the parents are very involved.
Are they? So what if a kid is sort of dropped through the cracks with inappropriate parents, who's going to step up and make that decision?
Well, the school would recommend that.
School will?
Yeah, yeah. The school would recommend, hey, you need to keep Tucker back. He's not mature enough, his grades are not getting up, and so on.
Okay.
Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. New business E. This is policy amendment six point three one six, suspension, expulsion, and remand. This is the second, final reading for this policy as well. We have a motion on new business E.
So moved.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business F. This is policy amendment six point three one seven, student disciplinary hearing authority. This is the second, final reading. We have a motion on new business F.
Make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Michaela, any discussion?
Is this, is this, any, this, does this apply to this student athlete that's playing basketball, football, Brian? Is that covering anybody in our school system as far as?
This would be for?
What is that? Explain that to me.
This would be any student, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yes, anybody in our school.
For any student in the system.
Any student?
Any student.
From kindergarten up?
Yeah.
Pre-k.
Pre-k.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business G. Policy amendment four point six oh two, honors designations rank. This is the first of two readings for this policy. We have a motion on new business G.
So moved.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, do we have any discussion?
Is this our new policy?
Yes, it is. It's the one, when we sent it to TSBA, they recommended that we put that scale in there.
Okay, I was, I was wondering where that come from, okay.
Because it's a, the state has a uniform grading po, policy, and that scale is straight off the uniform grading policy. So everybody's treated the same.
Any more discussion? Not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business H. This is textbook adoption. We have a motion on new business H.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, not, Mr. Michaela, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
The only question that I have, I know in the past, there have been times where teachers were asked, you know, what their opinions were on which book that they wanted to use. And I'm sure that happened here.
It did.
But, uh, then ultimately, the recommendation though was different than what the teachers wanted. And I'm just wondering.
Each school has a representative for the grade span, and the, the teachers within that school tell that representative their vote, and then the representative votes on behalf of the school.
Okay. So it was done according to what the teachers wanted?
It might not have been saved. This particular school might not have, as a collective group.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one school may want one book, but the majority wanted something else.
And that's fine, as long as everybody was fairly represented. That's my question.
Each, each school has a representative picked by their staff.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Spending money, is that what you should?
Oh, is that, I thought that was just, I thought it was just approving the list.
You're just approving the list, okay.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, just, that's just to approve the textbook adoption list.
Getting remembered.
Yeah.
Lot of money.
I think that will have to come before us when they decide, when, when they buy through it.
Yeah, it'll be in the budget, you know, the budget.
Right.
What'd you say, Brian?
That will come through the budget whenever they actually buy. This was just approving the list, they can pick it on.
Okay, okay.
New business A. This is the athletic training agreement renewal. Do we have a motion on new business A?
So moved.
Mr. Michaela, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I apologize, I didn't make the meeting the other day, I'm kinda.
Well, I, I think we have the representatives from Drayer here. Uh, this policy here that you just voted on to approve does not, uh, I don't believe in part two before I made this agreement.
That's right.
Disagreement.
Say that again.
The policy that y'all just voted on, put forth for vote on, does not include two athletic trainers. For both schools. It includes, this is off the, reverting back to the old policy that was set.
That was always coming by the meeting the other day.
Right. It, it's reverting to one full-time athletic trainer and a part-time athletic trainer for one school.
That's what this one right here is?
Yes, yes.
We don't, we don't want a trainer for each school.
Well, I mean, I, I made a second on the vote, so we can have a discussion, because I was not, I was at the cover of the Smitha Friday, so you know, there's no way for me to be here.
I will vote to approve this.
I will not vote for this.
But how would I?
Well, I mean, can I ask a question while this is kind of flying around the table in a hurry, and then I, I saw Mr. Winker sit back down. Now, I'll be real brief, because I want him to stand back up. I like it when he talks. Uh, my thing of is, long, long short of this, I'm not gonna be happy with one athletic trainer trying to serve two high schools. I mean, it's that simple. I, I'd like to say it's that one, but that's just my thing, and I wouldn't hear that a day.
Go ahead, Mr. Winker.
Well, Mr. Smith asked us to look at it. Here's where I think you are. You have right now a, a contract in place that provides one for one school, and then there was a stop and for the other schools. This was done back in two thousand and eleven. And in all candid circumstances, were much different in two thousand and eleven than they are now with the personnel that you have. So you've got a, a whole, so you have a, a couple of different options. Um, one, this current contract has a year-long, what's called an evergreen clause. It continues year to year unless you give notice for, uh, to terminate a year prior. That's where you are today. It doesn't sound like anybody's happy with what you currently have right now. So most likely, the vote, first vote may be, and if you're not up for the vote, but it may be to terminate the present agreement that you have, so you're not stuck with the current agreement going forward. Now, this current contract also, though, allows an amendment, uh, by, in writing, that the board has to approve. And this doesn't expire until June the thirtieth, so you've got a bit of time. But you can have an amendment in writing to go, to carry you through this next year. And then come next year, you're free to open it up for proposals from, from Drayer and anyone else who would like to present a proposal, and then you can set up a new contract at that time. But I don't think anybody's happy with what you've got right now on the table. And you probably want to consider terminating that, otherwise you're waiting, you're actually two years out if you, because you've got a year evergreen clause. But there's nothing that prohibits you now to carry you through this next academic year from trying to amend this agreement to satisfy what everybody wants, which is obviously too, sounds like too tranquil.
So what you're saying, we can terminate the contract with an amendment on it?
Yes.
To the, to the end of the contract?
Yes. Yes, I think that's probably what you're, what you're looking at. Again, I don't get the vote, but I think that's, that's probably what you're thinking about. But I think the first step is to try and terminate this one.
Brian, you want to clarify something?
Well, you, you'll need to withdraw your motion first.
Well, let, let me clarify this, right.
Let me, somebody just?
I, I was chairman of the board when this contract was signed. I was.
This one right here?
This one right here.
It's been, and it's been in effect till, till, till right now?
Twenty eleven, I believe.
Till right now.
I will not take two thousand and eleven.
Uh, we had athletic trainers before then. They were supplied by the local hospital. Uh, come up, Drayer had, had come in and they'd offered us a better deal. Now, and I pointed this out in our meeting the other day, the reason why the original contract is wrote for one full-time athletic trainer and a stipend of fifteen thousand dollars for a part-time athletic trainer, because at that time, Mr. Allison was our health teacher, teacher, and he was also the athletic trainer under the hospital, and they paid him a stipend. And he, so he, dual roles.
But he was only at Gornville alone?
He was, he's on Gornville alone and they had one at Smith County High School. So, and, and Lee did an excellent job for a lot of, for, anyway. And that's where the, that's where this fifteen thousand dollars come in. But when Drayer put it out there, at that time, we had him employed as a teacher. So they upped the ante for fifteen thousand dollars for a stipend for, hey, would Lee, would you stay? Yes, he was happy to stay. He took the stipend money. Well, they afforded a full-time trainer at Smith County High School. And that went on at twenty fourteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, somewhere. Lee left us and went on somewhere else to teach. So that left us with technically without an athletic trainer. Now, Drayer stepped up to the plate then, and they footed the bill, and they put a full-time athletic trainer.
For three years, they footed the bill.
They footed the bill for several years, you know. So they was above, you know, they went above and beyond what, what they have. Until.
Okay, stop right there just a second. Uh, they footed the bill.
For two athletic trainers.
All right. So up to what we are right now, Drayer's been putting the bill for the Gornville system.
Till December of last year. December of last year, twenty eighteen's when they stopped.
Um, they've been packing that by themselves. How did we get in that ditch and not make it to this vote?
Well, then it cost us nothing, boys.
It was not cost us.
It wouldn't cost us nothing.
It was costing Drayer. I don't see how they were doing it. I mean, I, I mean, I honestly don't see why they was doing it, but they done it. Because when I asked y'all the question at the last board meeting, how many athletic trainers do we have? And everybody spoke up and said two.
I think the answer to your question, Mr. Lewis, is that what they were doing didn't violate the contract. So that, that's why I didn't make it to the board.
Yeah.
Now, uh, but I, I totally agree with what y'all are saying. I, you know.
So are they pulling back now, Tom?
But they're not, they're not contractually obligated to continue to do that, and so they've decided not to. And that's where we are.
But they had a change.
Yeah, they, there was a change of ownership. And I guess they finally realized like, hey, we're not under a contract to do this this way, is the way I understand it. So December of last year, they pulled, they pulled their athletic trainer out of, well, Gornville School. And, uh, we're down to one athletic trainer and no athletic trainer. Now, uh, the way the contract reads right now, you know, if we was to renew this, I'm sure we'd still have one athletic trainer. And then I guess they would have to find somebody to, for a fifteen thousand dollar stipend at the Gornville, I'm assuming. I don't know. But anyway, I think the board, we'd like to have two athletic trainers. And we've sat down and met with them.
Is that at Gornville and Carthage?
Gornville and Carthage.
No, one, one each.
One each, one each high school.
I'm getting.
Well, Mr. Manning, the contract actually says that the school system hires the trainers for Gornville. Uh, they just contribute for fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, really?
Yes.
So at that time, we hired Lee.
And they contribute for fifteen. So you could actually put somebody who you want there, get fifteen toward, pay for that.
That's the reason I was asking the question, because the contract in Gornville reads exactly what he just said. It follows on notice.
Yeah, to pay, to put the personnel. And they pay the fifteen thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. They pay fifteen thousand, forty. It costs more than that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, that's how it come about. And of course, uh, in December, they pulled their athletic trainer. So now you only have one athletic trainer at Gornville.
Carthage, Carthage is the one that has them.
Gornville has them.
Gornville has them. And have one for Smith County. Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry. Mr. Vayton?
Yes, sir. We did have athletic trainers. Uh, Drayer, they, they, the contract reads that Smith County High School gets a full-time athletic trainer. Gornville, we call it a part-time, if that's what you wanna call it. But Drayer did send someone to Gornville High School on a part-time basis to, we were never left without an athletic trainer. It just, it wasn't a full-time athletic trainer. She took a, she was from California, I think, and she took a job in California, then she left. And then Kale has been splitting time with Smith County High School and herself. So we, we've never been without a, we, we've been able to get in touch or had an athletic trainer on, on campus.
Do you have one at every game?
I, I couldn't answer that a hundred percent, but I would have to say most every game. Kale, when, when, oh, sorry, I can't remember. When they, when they placed the girl there, yes, we did. Uh, when she left, Kale was, we gave her four in different directions with both high schools. So, but.
Did you have one at every basketball game?
Yeah. I, I would have to say most all of them, yes. I can't say with a hundred percent accuracy that we have. I mean, I can't remember that.
So with what he's saying, if I'm following this right, even though this thing kind of fell apart a little bit, Drayer sort of stepped up, took care of it.
Yeah, they, they stepped up. Yeah, they stepped up each time.
Now, I think what you're asking is two different things. Drayer went over and beyond again and put somebody to help both places. But on paper and theory, they didn't have, Kale was running between two, and they were gracious enough to help when they had somebody in the area.
Is this the, are y'all opposed to this, right?
Amy and David?
This is Glenn, actually. This is not who you spoke with the other day. This is Glenn, the area director.
So y'all like to, and this, this, obviously, you know, I was out here Friday.
I'd like to address the board if I can.
That's, that's fine.
There's an emotional people, and I can.
Well, that's the reason I said.
We're, we're open for discussion.
So I am Amy Ketchum. I'm the director of sports medicine for Drayer Physical Therapy Institute. And I am, we did have a change in ownership. I am the representative of all athletic trainers in the state of Tennessee for Drayer. Mrs. Glenn Thompson, he's the area director, is a physical therapist for us. And it has been our pleasure for the last several years to provide this for you all. Uh, during the time that we have had the change in ownership is when we noticed that, that these things were happening. Uh, and to be fair, really, there should be two full-time athletic trainers in the two schools as opposed to one full and one part, and kind of piecemealing it together, which is where we really started looking at, how should this be? Should this be structured differently in a way that we are not paying a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to do that? Um, although we are happy to provide them, you know, uh, how can we work together to get you two full-time people as opposed to one part and one kind of piecemealing it together for both schools?
How big a, how big a company is Drayer as far as employees in the whole system, wherever you're at?
We're the third largest physical therapy provider in the nation.
Third?
Mm-hmm. We have, uh, I don't remember the exact number. We have five hundred and something clinics across the nation. We have five hundred and ninety-one now athletic trainers across United States.
Pretty big.
Anybody have any questions for?
Any other questions I can answer for what we don't have.
What you was talking, we talking about the vows, ten, about the space up.
About how many students, student athletes or students do you all serve each, each school year for us? Do you know the answer to that?
I don't know the answer to that. No. I do know that we cover all home events, all home varsity JV freshman events. I will travel home and away for football. Uh, and we are there during practices, anything that's home on campus.
Are y'all wanting to stay in, are they wanting to stay in business with us here?
I'm assuming.
Yes, we would. This has been a good relationship of the parents. I think they're beneficial for both bodies. We would like to stay involved.
It's, it sounds like maybe we need to have them submit an amendment. Next meeting, can, if they, they can do an amendment to this?
The contract just says that any amendment to the present program just has to be in writing and approved. And for you, that means board approval. So everybody has to, it has to be in writing. If they, they want to submit a proposal as an amendment. Uh, this, this expires on June the thirtieth, so you would have another month if you decided to, to terminate, to consider the amendment at the same time. The other option is you operate what's here. They provide a full-time for Smith County. They provided fifteen thousand dollars toward one for Gornville. And the board hires a trainer, and we'll, and all can, we'll probably have to submit that payment above the fifteen to get somebody there. You could do that and then just have a whole new agreement, terminate the existing one, a whole new one starting next year. If you wanted proposals, um, from Drayer and anybody else, you could get them. Or we could do an amendment for, for this year to try and get something done, uh, to the present contract, go either way. And I think you would have another month because this contract is dated June thirtieth. So the anniversary date for the notice to terminate, in my mind, would be June thirtieth. So you would have the main meeting if you wanted to do that. But it may not solve it if you have a meeting.
Where y'all, where do y'all stand on that?
So either party, am I correct in, in asking, that either party? So either party, am I correct in, in asking, that either party can submit an amendment?
Sure.
We could, we could propose to you all, and you all could propose to us.
And, Mr. Chairman, you could appoint a committee to speak with us. If you wanted to have a committee of your board to, to try and talk that, to bring a, an amendment back to the full board for consideration, you could do that.
The, the only thing I would ask, and I know it's short-term, but we're trying to get a massive budget put together for folks with a brand in front of you guys and take the county commission. It would be, if it's anything monetary that you're gonna ask to us, which it'd be great if you weren't, but, but if you was going to, it really need to be brought from this board for approval. So it's gotta go in our, our budget, you know what I mean?
It need to be, it need to be brought before the board and voted on and made.
Yes. Or actually-
Well, I think it would be important to me, and the reason for my question, uh, was, it's important to me to know how many students you're serving to try to determine and what your profit is off of that. I mean, just to be in complete hands-
You wanna hear, this is what they suggest. Costs forty-eight thousand dollars per school, and they were wanting us to supplement like ten thousand dollars per school.
Total or per, per school?
And it was a negotiation.
Okay.
And, you know.
Speak up, sir Brian.
Yeah, I, I- Okay, they said, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, it was gonna cost about forty-eight thousand dollars per school net. And that's what they're paying for the athletic trainers. So they wanted us to supplement ten thousand dollars per trainer, which would be two trainers, be twenty thousand dollars toward a hundred thousand dollar expenditure on their part. And, uh, and to my understanding, that's what they were looking at, that, it was, it was open for negotiation too. And, uh, I see no problem with that. I mean, why, why should they have to pay all that?
Well, if they're making, if they're making twenty thousand, that's one thing, but if they're making a half a million, that's another.
Can I can speak to that? I don't, I can't answer the question of the number of athletes. I can speak to, we are losing money. We, we don't make money, I understand.
Okay, okay, that's fair.
The last numbers, and I will speak that there's been a merger, kind of buyout, um, and so there are some delays in reporting. But, uh, the last, um, I mean, we're looking at three or four students a month that need physical therapy.
Right.
Now, that need the athletic trainer services in the school, which we do not charge for.
Right.
Is somewhere probably between twenty and thirty a day.
Oh, sure, yeah.
I mean, I don't see how they put the bill this long. I mean, I wouldn't have.
Maybe that's why there's a buyout.
Right.
Maybe that's why there was a buyout.
Any rest, y'all ever had Dr. King to see that action on the sideline? I have, I've been impressed with it.
I have.
My daughter's been there for physical therapy, and it was a good experience, you know.
What do we do here, Mr. Chairman? You just, I know we got this, uh, the director said the voting thing, so let's make this fast and easy. You wanna appoint a committee and somebody meet?
Well, we gotta deal with this motion.
Yeah, we have to deal, let's, let's deal with this motion first.
Jamie's saying leave it in.
You can rescind your second and your motion, or we can vote on it very soon.
But if we vote it down, does it have to come, would it have to come back next meeting?
Vote it down, it's gone.
Yeah.
You probably rescind it.
Yeah.
So what, what are you suggesting that they vote? I mean, you can't suggest, but if we're wanting to do this to, to agree to it and then with, then amend it?
We can amend the law.
If Drayer has a formal amendment to propose, I'm sure they will present that to, to the director, somebody, to present to this board. And the chairman could form a committee to actually meet with Drayer, inform the ladies of that proposal. And then that proposal, then it can be brought back to the whole board to vote on, because you can't enter into it until you all vote on it.
It would have to be pretty quick.
You could go that route, and I think you've got time to do it.
You can get it on before next meeting.
Yeah, and it has to be, it needs to-
I wouldn't go past May.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with that.
So you'll, you'll have to rescind your-
We're not leaving this? We're not going up?
We gotta do a different direction. Your motion was-
Your motion was to approve this as is, and we'll have to withdraw or rescind your, your motion.
Well, I'd like to-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wilson, just reminding you, you could also table this until next meeting. After you rescind the motion, if it ever accomplished this, is what, you can have somebody motion to table, to table the item that they would present on the next meeting, or have the proposal in the-
Have the proposed amendment attached, okay. But we still have to rescind this original motion.
I'm not rescinding that.
Okay. Mr. McHale, just to rescind the original motion, Mr. Lewis, will you rescind the second? Okay. So now-
I'd like to make a motion, we table this until next meeting.
Second.
Mr. Manning?
Oh. Just a question, yeah.
I was gonna ask it, let's, maybe, can you add to your motion, table it, and, uh, appoint a meeting to enter the discussions with Drayer so that we can do an amendment?
Yeah, good.
But do you wanna do that?
Or I could just do that after we make this motion.
Yeah, we'll do that after.
Either way.
Mr. Manning has a motion to table, so we have the second.
Second.
Mr. Shelders, any discussion? All of the folks say aye?
Aye.
New business aye is tabled till the next meeting. And let's go ahead and appoint, uh, committee, and I want volunteers that can meet because I-
I'll volunteer.
Mr. Apple, Mr. Lewis. Anybody else that can get here?
I'll do it.
Mr. Manning? Okay. Uh, we probably need a point of contact, maybe a chairperson of this, we'll just call this the Athletic Training Committee.
I mean, I'll volunteer too.
Okay, we got Mr. Apple, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Manning on this committee, and we need somebody that can coordinate with Ms. Amy about times and coordinate with other three members. You wanna go, Mr. Apple?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Apple, we'll appoint him just the, the chair of the Athletic Training Committee, and that way you can coordinate with Ms. Amy. You've got her number, y'all, and then you can-
We'll need her.
Okay, after the meeting. And then we'll have that hopefully together. We have to have it together by the May meeting, whatever you all come up with, and then we can present it to the board.
Okay.
All right.
What, what you call this committee, athletic?
Athletic Training Committee.
We leaving?
Thank, thank you all.
I don't wanna forget it.
Okay, we will now move on to new business J. This is bid approval for gasoline. We have a motion on new business J.
So move. Second.
All right, Mr. Moore, Mr. Lewis, second, any discussion? Not roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Move on to discussion item eight. Get over here to it. Discussion item eight, this is, uh, discipline procedures, case six, student code of conduct policy, discipline procedures, grade seven, twelve, student code of conduct. And this was, we had a little discussion on this last week. Mr. Smith, you want to elaborate?
Hold on, let me get to which one it is here.
This was the, this was about the vaping and e-cigarettes, like-
Yeah, the, it, I don't know, I think we need to, to maybe sit down with our SROs and our, and Judge Collins, and, uh, they just felt there's a lot of things in those. I'm not, when I was principal, I was much more adept at, at, at the inner work, as you know, I really was up on all of that. But I've talked to different people, the biggest thing, I think, is the availability of what can be in those, and it's scary.
It is.
Uh, well, there's one and two, I know both you guys have done a lot of that, so, uh, you haven't done a lot of it, but you, I hope, but you've taught a lot of it. Rephrase that. But, but I do think we need to look at, at matching that with the availability and with the, this is how serious it can be, if that makes any sense. I guess y'all seen it, because you're not doing it, but you've seen a lot of that.
Oh, yeah.
It's so easy, I mean, I-
There's different things people put in a lane, like just putting the vape juice and stuff down there. Uh, I mean, uh, they put, I mean, there's few names to put it in.
Just about anything, isn't it?
So are we, are we looking to move those from category?
Look, give me a second, not that I'm saying this is, is a zero tolerance fence at all, but I have, can, can, once its standard is met for the state, the things they, or the, tell us that the SBA does, we need for a zero tolerance, can we make anything pure zero tolerance within reason? Not that this should be, I'm not saying that, uh, just a question that was asked. In other words, alcohol right now is not a zero, but could, could it be made one if that's?
I, I don't think so, because zero tolerance, basically, by statute.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. I had that question posed for you.
Depending on what's in the vape can, it could be a zero tolerance.
Yeah, yeah.
If there's marijuana in the vape can.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think you necessarily wanna change categories, Brian, I think that was your question, so much as redefining some of what devices are.
Okay, adding.
Yeah, adding.
If there's different things, we could add to that list of zero tolerance.
Okay.
And you, you said you didn't think so.
That's, I'm, I'm sure, but I think third by statute as to what is a zero tolerance.
But this could become a zero tolerance if they're using some sort of drug.
They've got one on patrol, or not, but if it had marijuana in the vape, then it would be a zero tolerance.
Cause I wasn't there.
Or may have been.
You know, some of these school policies just freak me out, you know. Uh, you get caught smoking in the bathroom, it's three sixty-five. You get caught with drugs, and you use thirty-day suspension, you know, I, I just, I don't, it don't make good sense to me, you know. Did you?
I didn't hear that.
I said, like, uh, if you get caught, uh, with drugs in your system or alcohol, whatever, it's thirty-day suspension. You get caught smoking in the bathroom, it's three sixty-five. What's wrong with that picture?
Is that by statute or is that by our policy?
The smoking, the tobacco possession?
Yeah.
That's what it's about.
Mm-hmm.
I'll, let me, let me look before I speak out here.
Is that not right?
No, smoke, just smoking tobacco is not. Back, tobacco policy, get a bit, but I think what you're trying, you got, uh, let me, if I had, this is a problem I've always had. If I, you're a principal, and I have pills, if I take them, they're in my body, then-
It's thirty days.
Yeah, then if I, but if you catch me with them, it's three sixty-five.
Three sixty-five.
And I think that's some areas that we need to redefine, because I do think at some point, you're, you take the risk of somebody hurting yourself, I mean.
Trying to take a handful of them before you catch them.
Well, that happens.
Yeah, and we, we've got two or three deals, I think, that we need to look at, you know, I mean.
Notice, we're going up.
Yeah, we need to, uh, I don't know if we just need to add this, everybody go through this a little better, cause I, I was-
I think this may be another area where we may need a committee appointed that encompasses, um, our SROs, our Judge, our Judge Collins, uh, principals and principals to look at what they're seeing versus, cause this is where rubber makes the road as far as, and I'm sure the principals that are here probably have some input on what changes need to be made. So I think we might need to look at it as a whole, but not just as the board, but get input from people who actually deal with the disciplinary policy on a day-to-day basis.
Do you wanna head a board?
I will, I will.
What about the safety committee?
Well, we could make that part of the-
Yeah, we could make that part of safety, I mean, you are the head of safety committee anyways, so, let's just do that, because we've already got that.
But Tina was on it, I think, and, uh, are you, did you?
Yeah, I think we replaced everybody on the board.
I can go back and-
These are just the same. We will vote, when we get the, the issue.
Are you on the safety committee?
Yeah, but the, on these trip-
I believe you are, because that's kind of-
Yours on it, but God bless.
So we're not gonna say aye or nay?
It's like the SRO, it's just there.
Yeah.
What I'll do is, Gina, if you'll send me an email with who it is, and I'll get with Mr. Smith, and we'll discuss who needs to be included in that, and we'll set, set up a meeting.
That works. That'd be a good action on that board, I mean, that meeting.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea. I'm glad you're telling that.
Okay. We'll do that, and then when you come up with a proposal of what needs to be changed, what we can bring to the board?
Yeah.
Any more discussion on?
What about some of the consent items? I overlooked it.
Uh, we've already passed on, uh, we can't go, we can't go back after it's already been voted, can we? Like the consent items, we've already motioned, passed, they're, they're done.
Okay.
What I was telling him was, he was asking about his consent items. I said, he needs to, uh, any consent items that he's got a problem or question on, he needs to have them pulled.
And then we- Before we, before we vote that.
And then we discuss, pull them, and then we bring it back, and then discuss each item.
Will you hit me next meeting?
I will, I'll do that.
I, I didn't know you had a consent.
One of these, one of these consent items-
When he says make a motion on consent items, when you get ready to-
Okay. Just let you, I don't know if we can discuss, but one of these items here is no signatures on it, and it may be all right with it, but I don't know if it is. There's a request in here for a summer count, but nobody signed off on it except for the principal. The coach didn't sign it. Is that necessary?
That's very sad.
You signed off on it down there.
Is, is that Smith County Middle?
The one?
Yeah.
Smith County Middle, the principal was out sick when this was due.
Oh.
And so the assistant principal phoned the principal, and the principal gave her consent to sign.
Oh, I got you.
Gina had asked me about that.
I didn't say you're, I didn't say you signed that down, no, 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 okay, I was looking.
She came to me on that.
That was time since.
You remind me of that next time. I'm still learning, Brian.
Oh, you're good, you're good.
No, that's good eyes.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. All right, if there's nothing more than that, we'll move to new business B.
Wait, wait, wait.
Whoop, I'm sorry, got another question?
We're, we're gonna address it anyway.
Okay, coming up here, okay, go ahead.
Where we at, Brian?
No, I'm in as part of-
You got the, the policy here.
Policy B.
New business B, or, uh, discussion B.
I went to the front again.
It was in part of that policy.
Discussion B.
We got.
Yeah, that will be discussed in there, I think, what you're, what we talked about last. If I can get to it now. Discussion B, this is policy five point one oh five recruitment employees. Mr. Smith.
Uh, the board, I think, wants us to make sure we had a seventy-two hour, uh, try to figure out a way to get that out there to locals within the system first. I've worked, Tracy's been working on that, she's been in my office a time or two today. She's having a problem, not, not that we're not trying to do it, it's, the problem is if she puts it out to the individual school, if she puts it on the website, it's gonna go to everybody. There's no way to keep it local. But she, she wanted it, she asked me, and I said, I'll ask the board if she could send it to the principals to distribute. That way it would stay localized as much as possible. She said, if I put it on the website, it's going everywhere. But-
I think we talked about sending an email to all-
I was gonna say, do, does each, each school have group emails for their teachers?
Uh, we, we have it, yeah.
I would do that.
Whenever I send out a group email, I got my SDD, whatever, and that concludes.
She, she sends an email to every principal for a, for certified posting.
But the principal, do they send it to each teacher an email?
I've been the last couple, I've been forwarding those out to our faculty staff.
Correct, I think that's what the board is wanting, isn't it?
Yeah, I think what she's doing to try to keep it localized, send it to you guys, and then you guys send it on to your particular staff.
See they get it.
That way everybody's getting it.
And all the principals will do that.
Yeah. I'll try to check and make sure that.
Yeah.
But now, we don't care to the group email, I just think they felt like it would come-
I suppose I say, this is for certified.
Well, I've got a question about that.
I thought this, I thought this said for all employees. For all, okay, it is, it is, it is licensed personnel, Gina. It is for licensed personnel only.
Uh, we all, Brian, is it all right, thanks to the director's question?
Yes, yes.
We, I think we all got an email today that y'all were including non-certified employees.
I, I-
Positions or something like that as well.
Well, you, you, I think, you felt like the board meant for this to go to everybody, and I, so it wasn't, I asked Tracy, she said it's gonna put, you know, more on me, but she said, I can do it. It's now we're gonna start posting all non- Now, we're gonna start posting all non-certified positions too, if somebody's got a problem with that.
Within the school system?
I don't have... Yeah, anybody, EA, Cook.
Yeah.
Within the school system.
And, and I can't tell you why it has never been done, that don't mean it's the right thing to do, because it's never been done, it's just never had, and, but that's whatever, I mean.
What I was gonna say to you, Director, the, like, the big reason is, of course, obviously, we don't know, you know, it did increase their pool maybe of the employee, people that would be interested in, for them, but then, like, that was earlier under the Secret Indian Action, Director Actions, you know, we hired a retired teacher as a, as a EA, and I think it's great, and, and if we have those things out there posted, you know, all the stuff we might get, a better pool sometimes, I, I think it's wonderful that y'all are doing that, give everybody a chance.
I just think it's just, it's just best for our people that live in this county and pay taxes, that they should have the first chance at any position that the Smith County school system offers.
Well, like, for example, let's say, and I've thought about this all day, of course, everybody knows about that a lot else anyway, but let's, let's just say that you've got an individual that lives in, let's say, defeated, for example, and they wanted a job in the school system, and at some point in time, they were able to get a position as an EA at New Milton.
Right.
Well, you know, obviously, they'd like to probably be back closer to home, because if they had that opportunity first, you know, and they was doing a good job and all that stuff, not getting the ability to go back closer to home. I mean, I just think it's great for everybody to have a chance.
Yeah, it's, when, when does this become an EEO kind of equal opportunity issue?
You're an equal opportunity employer.
I know, but when...
Couldn't do anything to...
I mean...
Well, wait a minute, I don't think we're saying that we're automatically gonna hire the person in the county.
No.
I think we're saying if we're gonna give the person an opportunity...
That's what we're still doing, yeah, yeah.
They could just get noticed.
Before.
Twenty-four hours prior.
It's not that they get preference in the hiring.
By no means we're saying, just because you're in the county school system, you're gonna get preference over somebody else. By no means would we, we want to handicap our principals and our directors.
Well, that's what I, I misunderstood, I apologize, I misunderstood where y'all were going with this.
We're just giving our people that's inside the system a heads up if a position is open.
And, and some people might not know there's a position open.
Right, right. I've had that happen.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see what you're...
Hmm.
Yeah, just make sure we understand, by no means we're saying we're gonna give you the job over somebody else, it's just, you're gonna get a first shot.
First shot at you.
Knowing a job, putting your name in the hat, and...
So, are they being posted on, are they being posted in the hallways or somewhere where a janitor?
It's posted in each school, anyway.
But it is being physically put up?
Yeah, it is, see, when we send something out to schools, they put it in the lobbies, they put it out anyway, but we're gonna make sure, hopefully through email and other ways, that it gets out there, so...
I just, other words, either way, you got it out there, and then if they don't, it's their fault, it's not ours.
And I do think it comes from the principal, if, like you said, if they'll do it, they'll won't admit, they'll look at it, see what it is, you know what I mean? It'll make it more personalized.
Right, right.
We can get them to do that.
So, we need to add something to this policy.
If you want the 72 hours...
The wording.
Well, did we agree on 72 hours or 48 hours over last week? Seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours right now for outside, I thought we was going 48 hours internally, and then 72 hours outside.
Forty-eight's not really, that's just two days.
But I understand, that's gonna, I mean, that's gonna have your principals gonna have to post it for five days, they're gonna have to have it out for five days.
Well, that's not a problem with that. I mean, really, there's not a problem with five days, because I mean...
Unless it's a hard-to-staff position, and that person is looking for a job, and they get hired by another county.
We've run into that issue where, where I work at, right? It's a long process to get somebody, and they're, a lot of times, or other people are grabbing them before we can get them hired. I mean, they're in our process, and they go somewhere else and get hired.
Still, I don't think 48 hours is enough. Make a motion. I make a motion, we do it 72 hours, I mean, that's just what it needs to be. And if we, if there's somebody that hot out there, we, you know, they just have to go on. I just, I don't, I just don't like it, not giving our people enough time to do, to apply.
We can't, this is just a discussion, we can't, I mean, we can't make a motion.
New business next week.
Yeah, it'd have to be new business.
I mean, next month.
We've got, we've got principals in here, what, what do you all think?
I think they didn't know if they're, if you give it to them 48 hours, you know whether you want the job or not. It's 28 hours, so I don't know. I guess I am, I'm disagreeing with 72 hours, and I'm afraid, I'm afraid they're gonna handcuff us in trying to hire, hire, I think 48 hours, well, just not...
Let me ask you, let me ask a question a different way. Do you feel like if it was 72 hour, a 72-hour window, that you might lose qualified applicants because of that? Okay.
I think it's more, I was in elementary school for seven years, so talking of you losing people in the high school, that is in elementary because of the math teachers, two, one's coming out of Dead, and one's coming out of Middle Tennessee, and both of them are going to match, we got no, we got no candidates, so if you try to snatch those folks...
How you gonna do the 48 hours and the 72 hours, like, if I was on a Friday afternoon, 2 o'clock, you know, Monday morning, it's gonna be over with?
I think you'd have to take that into...
We, we...
That's what I'm saying.
You couldn't take the weekend into account, you'd have to feed business hours.
I don't think another day gonna make a difference.
If you want to go to Smith County High School and teach, I'd give them my blessing, I would call, Tim would call me, and I would call Tim, and we would, when that job's closed in. A lot of the things that you're, that you're discussing and talking about from my seat, I'm just gonna speak, is happening.
All right.
It's happening. It doesn't happen every time. I mean, when I was in elementary, we was gonna hire a teacher, and some teacher would see the posting at Forbes River, and they wanted to come to Wardensville, they were gonna be one of the first people we were gonna talk to. I mean, we're gonna, we, we do those things from my seat. I, I can't, I can't even, I can never recall not giving, I'm not saying I hired them, or we hired them, but we, we always spoke with them, and talked to the principals, and talked to that teacher, and everything, I can't recall any time that they didn't have it enough.
Well, I think just from my perspective is, and I agree with, and I, and I'm sure everything you said is accurate, I guess I just feel more comfortable instead of hoping that somebody knows that we have policies that say it this way.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all.
You know what I mean, y'all are already doing it anyway, but, and I hope you do, and I appreciate having you, but, so we lost that, can't block somewhere, unless that policy board is competing to give our employees an opportunity, if that makes sense to you.
I mean, we could possibly lose, I mean, I'll give you an example, this year of our chemistry teacher, we wouldn't have, if I couldn't have told him he had a job, I called Mr. Smith and said, hey, actually, Mr. Smith called me, said, hey, you got this guy you need to talk to, he was going to Coolfield High School, they took the chemistry teacher at Coolfield, replaced him at Upperman, and he didn't have a job, so he was gonna accept the job at Coolfield. The day I called him, I said, you know, come and talk to me, and I pretty much offered him a job on the spot, because he didn't have, he didn't have nobody. So, that's kind of the things that...
What do you, when you don't have anybody, you have a substitute teacher, you talk about it?
We got a half position right now that we haven't helped give a certified teacher for two years that up anymore, possibly. And we, we taught Spanish last year, which was a fiasco, and that's my fault. Tim tried to help us video it, and, and we tried to teach it with a substitute teacher in the, in term name, and, I mean, we couldn't, it didn't work, it's not worth it, kid. But, I mean, they're hard to get, and most of those folks did math, some of our best math teachers, a couple of other professors, so we were trying, of course, the state's made it very difficult to teach them. But, yeah, we, we got, we, to answer your question, we are in a, we're in, we, we have kids sitting in classrooms that don't have certified teachers.
A lot of times, a lot of times, too, I would like to hire within the county, because they're gonna stay, they're gonna stay, but they may have been in his school, and I'd say, hey, give me some information on this one, I, I mean, I, we communicate with each other, and I, I'm getting low down, and getting bullied.
We want people who have, we understand that, if people don't have ties to Smith County, whether they're married, or moved into the county, or, odds are, if they're just a teacher here, they're gonna stay a year or two, when they offer $12,000 more dollars at Wilson County, or $24,000 at Rutherford, they're gone, we know that. Now, we're probably gonna lose our health science teacher two years at Rutherford County, I mean, that's gonna happen, so we're trying to prepare for that now. So, those things happen, we know those things, but, yeah, we want people in Smith County who has, you know, we're, I'm always trying to recruit kids to go be math teachers, we're gonna, you know, go back without a job, so we're always trying to do those things, we're gonna have...
That's what I was gonna ask, y'all recruiting recruits, like, new graduates, like, taking nerves from...
There's not any, according to what he said.
Yeah, we, you know, I mean, I, without saying names, there's one or two there in Smith County that, if you wanna be in Smith County, they've gone to be an elementary teacher, and I'm saying, they're good at math and stuff, I'm saying, go be a math teacher, you know, you're trying to get those kids to do those things.
There's nobody, nobody major in education or anything.
We started teaching as a profession, hoping that we could get, we got 25, 27 kids at Wardensville and that, and try to get them to interested in teaching, and go back to, you know...
Who do we, who do we have in central office that does that? They're supposed to be doing recruitment.
See this, this board right here, that was, they went to the job fair, was that in Coolfield, or the one in...
Tennessee Tech.
Tennessee Tech. We have, Tracy, Brasher, Melinda and Tracy went to Tennessee Tech. The job fair down here is one of the biggest ones in the mid-state, I mean, actually Vanderbilt come and wanted to imitate, we, we had different staff members down there, did, so, we're ongoing all-time recruiting with the two major universities in the area, which is Middle and Tennessee Tech, we don't do as much with UT. For example, to talk about what Shane said a little bit, there was two math teachers in the state that was gonna graduate last year, two, and they both decided to go on and get their EDS. So, it was zero graduated within the radius, so there's certain positions like that, no matter how, they can go anywhere they want to.
Well, that's what about, say, 48 hours, 72 hours ain't gonna impact us?
They're gonna, they can go anywhere they want to, but on the other end, like, Shane talking about that, if he hadn't hired him then, he was gonna take the Coolfield job. He was gonna take that Coolfield job, I know.
And we had an uncertified teacher in chemistry.
He, he had a family to feed, and he's awesome, he was lucky to get him, and, and he was gonna take a job, because he was afraid, he was, he was scared, he's a young guy with a family, he was gonna take the first job that was offered him.
Let's, can we take a quick recess, and I've got some requesting one?
Yeah.
Let's take a quick recess, a quick five-minute break, anybody needs to run the restroom or anything? Uh, we were on discussion B, and we decided that we want that as a new business, looking at that policy next meeting. Did we have any other, any other discussion on that?
Real quick, Director, do you have, do you have a program in place for recruiting some licensed personnel?
Oh, yes, I mean, we don't have it right, but we, that's what I'm saying, we've got job fairs, we're constantly calling the universities, they're such a need, and then our principals recruit, I mean, they network.
So, you're, you're basically like, we're like everybody else that's looking for qualified employees?
Yeah.
But really, I mean, are you staffed? I mean, how do you cover that? I'm just asking, how do you cover putting someone on it and saying, hey, I mean...
Well, see, your principals are gonna recruit constantly, and then, and then we work with every university in the area, constantly. We work with, they, actually, like, Tech's got people in that comes in through here, so we resource through them. Middle has given through when we're doing student teaching. We're one of the, through the years, we've been one of the foremost of being very open, we're trying to set up something, we got a great relationship with Comber University right now, we're trying to get as many people as we can in here to student teach, even, even NASA recruiting process, we can get them in here to student teach, we might get some of them, you know what I mean?
So, Mr. Baden, he, he explained, we're gonna lose somebody because of better money to the surrounding county, right?
Yeah.
So, how, how we as a board...
You, there are some counties that he mentioned that we just don't have the tax base to file. I mean, you, you're talking Rutherford County, you're talking, he named Rutherford and Williamson, Sonner, I mean, that's, that's where we have to look at...
So, your kids are being penalized because they're in a rural county?
They're not, they're not penalized, you can only do stuff...
Well, you can't have the money to compete with Wilson County teachers, all right, David?
We still have the tax base.
We don't have a tax, I mean, that...
Well, like I said, the math thing, there was two people that could have graduated last year, basically in the state of Tennessee, and none of them even, they went on to higher education. So, you, you can't compete unless you got, you know, like, I work the top 10, Gina said it, every year I work the top 10, both, every year I speak to them, and say, man, we gotta get you people back in the county, we gotta get y'all back in the county. That's about, that's one of your biggest recruiting tools, is family, you, it's not gonna be money, it's gonna be, they, they gotta be a reason, they wanna marry here, they wanna live here, they want their kids to grow up here, that's gotta be our recruitment tool.
But just, this is a business incentive, right?
It's the biggest business in the county, right?
This is a business, and I mean, you need incentives to keep people here, and I, I'm sorry, but that's, that just goes so far, don't you agree?
Won't it does, but I don't know anybody that's recruiting any better than us, because they're coming to see what we're doing with our job fairs, they're coming, I'd put our recruitment, what we're doing with anybody in the state of Tennessee.
Really?
I would, I mean, I, I believe that, don't you, Gina? I mean, we, from our department heads to, you know, they're recruiting, and I, I know they are, but we've gotta go back to like Shane said, if, if, if we want to stay up, we've gotta get these kids interested in the high school level to go into this, that's probably your biggest, best recruiter, is those two guys sitting right back there trying to promote kids into going into teaching.
Well, Tommy, you've been on the board a long time, I mean, and this is a serious issue, don't you think, getting good teachers?
Yeah, yeah.
This is, this serious issue in any business, right now, finding anybody to work.
Wilson County, I believe it's 1,200 teachers short last year.
1,200 teachers?
I think I'm getting you right, at least 1,200, the number I heard was, Williamson County was, I forgot what, Williamson County, Rob, I see, he was on the school board at one time, was Sonner, or was it, what was, what kind, do you know, have you heard of their numbers as far as need this past year? I think I heard 400, but I don't know if that's true or not. We're, we're losing a lot, too, on the borders, Georgia's kicking us, I mean, if you're getting out of college, your city, unless you're tied, now it goes to Georgia, you know, Alabama's killing, Kentucky retirement system is 67% versus our 45, on 27 and 30, with a biotic 25, you can't compete with that. I mean, if you, if you're flexible, you, if you're, if you're getting out of school and you don't care where you go, we can't compete with that. You gotta have a reason for it to come back. We'll never compete with that.
And that's nothing we can control, that's the state.
No, that's the state.
The state.
TCRS is...
Yeah, TCRS is 45%, and Kentucky's 67, on 27 years.
But, but your new recruits now don't even get offered that, they have to go 401K, getting you hired.
Well, yeah, I was fortunate enough to.
Since twenty-four.
It's not just in the case, it's in any business, Smith County.
They don't get that.
It's, it's in the factories, I mean, you go, if you work here at a factory, you, you, you know, if you wanna go, you know, any other factory, Nashville, these people have coal.
Two R W.
Four glass plant.
It comes back to the fact, what Mr. Schmidt said, you better have some kind of ties to this county, basically, family, love it here, you know?
That's why I'm here.
It's always been, it's always been hard to get.
That's why I'm here. I can go somewhere else and make more money.
That's why I'm here. See what I mean?
All right, we will, uh, put that on as new business item.
And you want it for both certified and non-certified?
All right, let's go to discussion C, and this is the Director of Schools Communication Plan to Board Members.
Oh, I, I don't think I could ever express enough that we can't communicate too much, and, and if I can do a better job, I think I've expressed as every y'all wanna do that. The, the, my biggest thing's consistency, you know, when I talk to one board member, well, I only wanna know what I need to know. I talk to another, no, I need a uniform thing, because what's important to you, as we've seen, may not be important to what I consider, and I don't mean that bad, and what's important to me, you may think, why is he sending me this crap? Okay, so what I wanna do, and I've talked to other directors, I've talked to other counties, I've talked to, uh, staff, uh, here's some things I would like to, we did this last year or two years ago, uh, again, talking about competing with people around us, Wilson County, Sumner County, I put all their principals on twelve months, all their assistant principals on twelve months. Our principals wasn't even on twelve months, so we put them on twelve months a couple of years ago, or whenever it was, and I did this with a plan if we ever needed to. I don't know of a county around us, and if you don't, I want you to tell me what you want and what you don't want, and add to it, and I'll check out. But I would like to add, it would, it wouldn't add five minutes on the U meeting every month, if that. If we, I'd like to have a principal's report, your principals ain't gonna like it, but most y'all are here anyway, okay? I'd like for them to get up so that you can put a face and say, hi, I'm Leslie Pope, I'm at Forks River, this is what we got going on. And that way, if you had a question for that particular school, I think it would increase our, uh, awareness and what, what's going on. I'd like to add that.
You mean, every principal, every month?
Every, but it'll go through just like that, I mean, it don't, I did it, Clay County's doing it, I think every system that I know around us are doing this, okay? If, if you're on a twelve-month, and it sounds lengthy, but it won't be unless there's questions. You know, I don't want them to get up there and give you a tour of the school each month, I want you to get up there and say, hey, congratulations, we won the county tournament, uh, we're having turkey at rest, and that, we, this is what, we, we hired three new teachers, we're excited, we painted walls, do y'all have any questions? And if I can't be there, I put my assistant or designated in. I just think it would really help you to create a relationship with our staff. Now, I can do that or not do it, it's just suggested, uh.
I thought we did that the first time, we did like three schools.
Yeah, we did, we did it three and three, but I think.
Just once a year, from what we usually do.
Yeah, but I think you can do it and make it super quick, uh, it won't, I'm talking about a thirty-second, if I gotta, you know, and if you don't, or we can do half every other month, or however, but, I just, they so much, and I don't wanna put more on you guys, but they so much going on in these high schools, especially, not that others are not important, but i- if you could just get a feel, it would help me, too, bring up things to relate to y'all better, and that, like I said, you tell me what you want, that's what I'll fix, okay? Uh, I'm gonna do a, if I give you, I'm not gonna ever put a lot in writing, I just don't do that, okay? Uh, because of security, but after I was insured, that are, that are emailed to these people are pretty secure, okay? If I give you an eight-one-one notice, if I put, if I put nine-one-one, come, come, there's something going on bad, but if I put eight-one-one, that check your email, it'll be like Robin and I done, I've done, talked to Tricia, Tricia's gonna be on board more with me when, when, like, Robin and I were in that situation defeated, we thought that went out, but no cell service, okay? We should have drove out, done a better job, Tricia and I have a plan now, that she can get eight-one-one, check your email, they've been locked down, defeated, it's taken care of, all's good, blah, 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 okay? Uh, uh, each Friday, if you would like me to, it may be in handwritten notes, 'cause I'd like to start taking a picture of like, things that I think we transferred to this person, you may get a phone call, this, that, if it was bad, that, or something, it would go on your eight-one-one notes, but if it, every week, when she does the school update, I'll put my notes, transfers in, if you think that would be beneficial. Uh, 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 we talked about the, uh, and I guess that was the main points that I wanted to address, and I'm open to anything you want, if you want me to do a uniform form, if you want me to do, I don't care, you tell me what you want, and that's what will get put together.
Don't have to be mentioned in the act, and we go home and sit on it and think on it, right? Can we?
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what, I, I can't, I don't wanna start it until we get a uniform plan, you know what I mean? But what I don't, uh, I don't think Scotty, you care me, Scotty calls me, Tommy calls me, if I see I miss it, David call me, Brian call me, right? Call me, and I'll call you right back, too, I don't want you to think, well, he's doing this and that, you know? Call me, I don't care, I, 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 'cause I'm not, and I, we stressed our staff, our budget down, we don't hide nothing. Now, we may forget, and we may, what's, again, what's important to us, you get hit with something we don't think, you know, and it's something we think, you say, well, we sending this, but I just want something uniform, I don't want it in the, I don't want it from Brian, so don't send me nothing, and you say, just what I think, 'cause what's important to you, I don't know, you know what I mean? So I wanna do what you want, and, and I want our staff to do that.
Well, you can ask this board, okay? You're sitting there assing.
Well, I hope not, I mean, I want you to have a great, I want you guys to be very involved in, you know, and I don't say this negative at all, Robin, most of the prior board didn't, they just didn't want. They were very involved, but they didn't want me daily telling them things, and I said, it's gonna be a blow-up. And so that, every person, every coach, you got a different personality, and every board, you got a different personality, and I need to know. But I've always said, and I know, Gina, you've heard me say this for years, we need to communicate better, and, and, and I wanna do that.
I personally, as far as every school or every principal, every meeting, I personally feel like that that's too much on our principals. I feel like that they've got too much as it is to attend, and they're spread very thin. Um, you know, and I appreciate their input, I appreciate the ones who do come, and who, you know, 'cause we, almost every meeting, we rely on whoever, whoever's out there, it's pick a principal, and you go, you get asked something, um, for that.
Or we could ask them, Robin, just to be here, I mean, in case there's questions.
I know, but I hate to.
I hate to force.
I hate to force them to do that, and because we get the, the email on every Friday, you know, that does give us, whether they're having interest in cheerleading tryouts, and faith club this, and whatever that, that may be, you know, I feel like if there's, you know, something, I just hate to ask, add another task to our principals, uh, you know, and it's gonna be very hard unless we put a shock collar on them to make them stop at thirty seconds, because they're proud of their schools, and they should be, but by the time that we go through each and every school, that's a, that's a lot.
Yeah, well, or we could ask them to be, or representative, now, they're on twelve-month contracts, and we don't ask, you know what I mean?
I know, I just hate, I feel like it's another, you know, if there's something special, they've always got a place, they've always got an opportunity. That's just my personal, I mean, maybe the rest of y'all wanna hear from them every month, I don't know, but I, I just, I feel like that that's a lot to ask, you know, to have them attend, or a designated attend every month, but, I mean, that's just me. It's not that I don't wanna hear from them, it's just that I hate to put that on.
Hate that, yeah, hate that's gonna be here for that.
For literally thirty seconds, if, if that's what.
And, and again, these are ideas, if you want, that's set and think, and then.
Yeah, we, I mean, this, this needs to be a discussion next meeting.
Yeah.
That, you know, you, you think about it, chew on it a little bit.
What you want, you know?
Critique what, yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, it could maybe be if an incident happened at a school.
Of what?
If an incident happened, like, over there, that incident, it defeated, then maybe have that teacher, that principal here that next meeting.
To, to tell how it was handled, what we could have done better.
And that could be.
We did learn from that.
Yeah, we did, and we met immediately, Marty, after that, to say what we did good and what we did, we met the sheriff's department and EMS, and, and talked about all the good things, and talked about what we need to do a lot better, too.
That's a good point, if, if there's an incident, they come the next, next meeting, just describe how it was handled.
Yeah.
But we'll think about it, and we'll put it on the next meeting, and everybody just kinda see what ideas they come up with, and we'll get something uniform, everybody be on the same page. All right, any need to discuss any policies from March?
None other than what we've already.
Yeah, what we've covered already. All right, any need for a debate session?
Tell me what.
There is?
There is. I'm making a motion to go to debate session.
Mr. Manning?
Say it.
Mr. Apple, all the papers say aye?